Yeah, we're ready.
You.
Hello and welcome to the October 28th Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order in accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on October 24th, 2013 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act...
Oh, I'm waiting.
Roll call please, Mr. Ecker.
Mrs. Boekesewski. Mrs. Centafonte.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley. Mrs. Lay. Mr. Pulcifer.
Here.
Mrs. Swan.
Here.
Mr. Kinst.
Here.
Okay, we have forum, we are officially in session. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the State of New Jersey as follows: A, the matters to be discussed are negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association and Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association, and a personnel matter. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are going to close session, we expect to return at 7:30. Thank you. Okay, thanks. We're back from executive session. Again, welcome to the October 28th, 2013 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. May I have a roll call please, Mr. Ecker?
Mrs. Boekesewski.
Here.
Mrs. Centafonte.
Here.
Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley. Mrs. Lay.
Here.
Mr. Pulcifer.
Here.
Mrs. Hassan.
Here.
Mr. Kinst.
Here.
We have forum. Back in order. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have correspondences as listed in the agenda, and before we start off with the superintendent's report, I'd like to take a presidential prerogative and announce to the public and also to the board members that on October 22nd, the HEA negotiations team with our board negotiations team with the appointed mediator met during this marathon negotiation session, we reached a tentative agreement. As per the mediator's direction, we are in a communications blackout in which details of that tentative agreement will remain confidential until ratification. So this board looks forward to the ratification and wants to thank everybody involved. Continue on, so good news on that front. Now I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. It's my pleasure to introduce our CERT graduates. We have 25 teachers who have participated in the Community Emergency Response Team Training, which includes emergency management as well as first aid. This 25 added to our previous total, we have over 200 staff members in Hillsborough Township Public Schools who have completed CERT training. David Gwynn is here with us tonight. He is head of emergency services here in Hillsborough Township, in our township, and he will, if you don't mind, come to the podium, and we can announce and recognize all of the graduates at this time. Mr. Gwynn.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. We have seven of the 25 here tonight, so if I could read off the names and we'll give out certificates, I apologize for the names we're gonna read that people aren't here. First, Mark Angelone. Loretta Caldwell. Kelly Callahan. Brianna Saliano. Gabriel Chaya. Jennifer Copan. William Dominic. Kim Pajardo. Melissa Fern. Kaitlin Harrison. Scott Habenstrait. And then Amy McCray. Jaclyn McGill. Jennifer Michellea. Nick Mustakis. Michael Napa. Rebecca Oliver. And Beatrice Padilla. And then to round out the class, we had Emily Panic. Laura Pospich. Jessica Raymond. Megan Sexton. Ashley Schopsire. Erica Vale. And Kelly Yankowski. Round of applause, everybody, please. Okay, so we keep it short and sweet, so we did. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn, and thank you all of the CERT graduates. Congratulations. Or a big round of applause for all of our teachers. It's my pleasure also to share with you some great news for the board as well as for the public. Although the full high school sports season has not yet come to a close, I would like to report on a few teams' accolades thus far this season. The boys' cross-country team claimed the Somerset County Championship title for the third straight year. The team broke the Pleasant Valley Park course record previously set by Hillsborough in 2002. The boys also won the Skyland Conference Championship with another course record. Let's give a big hand to our boys' cross-country. Also, the girls' cross-country team was crowned Somerset County Champions for the fifth straight year. They won the Skyland Conference Championship for the first time since 2009, and were Delaware Division Conference Champions for the regular season. Let's give our girls' cross-country a round of applause. The girls' gymnastics team took third place at Somerset County Championship with sophomore Sarah Palley, winning the floor exercise for the second year in a row, and tying as county all-around co-champion. The team completed in the Skylands Conference Championship on Friday, October 25th, and took second place. Sarah Palley took first place in the balance beam competition. Let's give our gymnast as well as Sarah a big round of applause. In the Somerset County semifinal game, the Hillsborough Boys Soccer Team beat Pingree for the first time in school history. The championship final game was held on Saturday, October 26th, at Watchung Hills. Hillsborough lost the final to the number-one seeded Watchung Hills. Let's give our boys' soccer team a big round of applause. And finally, the girls' volleyball team took first place in the Moorestown Invitational Volleyball Championship. Congratulations to our Hillsborough Girls Volleyball Team and all of our athletes. This past week, the district celebrated Red Ribbon Week with the year's theme being, quote, "A healthy me is drug-free." The week kicked off with the annual Family Fun Night on Friday, October 18th. Participants enjoyed a DJ, prizes, games, and more. This event was the beginning of the Red Ribbon Week canned food drive for SHIP, standing for Samaritan Homeless Interim Program. Eight of the nine schools spent the week collecting canned foods to donate to SHIP. By the end of the week, students and staff had collected over 200 bags of food for the needy. Thank you so much to all of the students who participated in this activity. Our World Language Honor Society inductions were held on Thursday, October 24th, for the five respected language honor societies at Hillsborough High School. Twenty new members were inducted into the French Honor Society, 10 new members inducted to the German Society, 21 new members into the Italian Society, and 13 new members to the Latin Society, and 59 new members were inducted into the Spanish Society. To be eligible for the Language Honor Society, students, excuse me, students must be at least a junior, achieve an unrounded final average of 90 percent or higher in each of the last two years of language studies, must be enrolled in a Level 4 or higher in French, German, Italian, and Spanish class, or a Level 3 in Latin class, and must have an overall average of 85 or higher. Let's give a big round of applause to all of our language arts students who were recognized as part of the Honor Society. And that concludes my report and all the good news.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Next item is approval of minutes. Those actually were not posted, so we're gonna table that till the next meeting. And now I'd like to open the floor up to new business. So we'll start with the public. If you can state your name and address, please.
Dana Blevins, President of the Hillsborough Education Association, and we would like to thank the board for hearing us and coming to the table on October 22nd for a long but productive mediation session, and we too are pleased with being able to announce a tentative agreement between the association and the board that awaits ratification from both parties. We look forward to continuing our collaborative culture to keep Hillsborough one of the best public school systems in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Okay. Any other new business from the public? Yes. Hi.
Good evening. My name's George Cofino. I'm a parent of a middle schooler, Grace Cofino, here in Hillsborough, and the reason that these young ladies are here, standing behind me, is with regards to the softball program, past and upcoming this season. The ladies have something to say, and I think I'll let them speak before I add any comments, if that's okay with the board.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Megan August. I, my two years at the middle school, I played for the softball team under Mr. Rosenbloom, and he was an amazing coach. He always told us how he was, his door was always open to us, whether at school or for any problems we had, we could always go to him. He said that for the time that he coached us, we were like his daughters, and I think we can all agree that we all saw him as a father figure. He helped me get through my best friend's father's death. I found this out in school, and I knew exactly who to go to. I knew I could go to him for anything, and he helped me go through this. He also helped my two sisters, who he also coached and taught, and we both all feel the same way about him, and it's just heartbreaking to hear that he's not gonna be a coach anymore because he taught me so many things. He was the best coach, and he was always critical when he needed to be, and always nice when, like, I needed him. He was always there for me, and he always said that his door would be open, and I knew that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Delaney. I played on the middle school softball team for Coach Rosenbloom for two years. I learned a lot from him, both on the field and life lessons, including responsibility, commitment, and leadership. I would hope that the future middle school softball players will have the same great opportunity that I had with Coach Rosenbloom. He treated the whole team, past and current players, like we were his own family. I hope he will continue to be the middle school softball coach and keep the past traditions of the team going for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jenny Klein. I believe that the future players of the Hillsborough Middle School Softball Team should be by Mr. Rosenbloom because he was like a father figure to all of us. He was always there for any of us, for any problems that we had, and we all had trust in him. He was a critical coach when he needed to be in the practices and in the games, but he had a lasting impression on every one of us, and we all believe that he should continue to be the coach of the future players. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikita Solaki, and Mr. Rosenbloom wasn't just an ordinary guy. He taught his students valuable lessons and life lessons that would help them along the way. He taught me that doing one simple thing, like saying hi to someone in the hallway, could help them out in life. He taught me the characteristics needed to succeed, not only in school but in the real world. No teacher has ever touched me in the way that he has. He has told me things from two years ago that I still remember today and that helped me along the way. I've never met anyone in my life with as much passion for coaching as he does. Mr. Rosenbloom put more effort into his team than any other coach that I've had ever seen. He's not only a phenomenal coach and teacher, but he truly is an overall great person and role model to those around him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alyssa Savarino, and Coach Rosenbloom is one of the most inspiring people that I've ever met in my life, and being a player of his for two years, I've learned many lessons from him that I can use not only in softball but throughout my life. I think that he should be a coach because to all of us, he was always there for us, and he never gave up on us. He always believed in us, and not only helping me mature as a player, he helped me grow as a better person, and I think not having him as a coach would be an enormous loss. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristen Sarek. Last year I was on the softball middle school team, and as, even though I didn't get to play as much as I wanted to, Coach Rosenbloom helped me improve in many skills and gave me the opportunity to play for his team for a year. He also gave me the opportunity to make more friends and taught me how to be a successful softball player. It would be a shame if he didn't get to coach this year.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Cofino, and I was a part of the softball team last year as a seventh grader. Moving to New Jersey from California, going into the middle school was a very hard time for me, but Coach Rosenbloom made it worthwhile. He treated all of his players, including me, like we were his own daughters, and cared about each and every one of us with all of his heart. Coach Rosenbloom taught me more than how to catch a fly ball. He taught me how to be a better person for myself and to others. He taught me so many things that even words couldn't explain, but a lesson that I did learn from him was that he had, that with softball, if you work hard for something diligently, and you can truly, if you are truly determined to get something done, that you can do it. Starting middle school, it was very scary, but Coach made us feel that we could all always come talk to him for anything, whether it had to do with softball or something personal, that you could always count on him to be there for you. He has touched the hearts of not only his players but all of his students and the parents of those students. The minute I found out that he was fired, I was devastated, as you could see from all of the past players that have spoken today, and it would be a big loss of the middle school if they didn't hire him back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's John Sarek. My daughter Kristen just spoke earlier. I just wanted to speak on Rich Rosenbloom's behalf because up until this year, I gotta tell you, I'm not a psycho softball parent. I actually hated the game, if you will, because it was, been like eight years since we've been watching my daughter start from this high up to this high. It wasn't, to me, it wasn't an overly exciting game. It was only until the last inning of the final game that our catcher, excuse me, yes, our catcher had a leadoff walk home run and won the game and sprung the girls onto the championship, which they went and won. Some of the most exciting times that I've had watching my daughter was from last year under Rich Rosenbloom's guidance. I think he teaches the girls integrity, honesty, a lot of the things that the girls have previously said. I was a little shocked to find that when we were going to get a declaration from the mayor for the girls, for their achievements, that they, Rich Rosenbloom pulled us aside and said he wasn't gonna be asked to coach the team again this coming year, and we were all shocked and taken back by that. No reason was ever really truly given as to the why this change in direction after someone who's had nine seasons as a softball coach, over 130 wins and only nine losses. It was a little shocking why you would break a wheel that's already working. My daughter and a few of her friends did go and speak with the principal, and I felt tonight, if I didn't come up and speak on Rich Rosenbloom's behalf, excuse me, that as a parent, I wouldn't be exhibiting the behaviors that we try to tell these girls and teach these girls to do. So I would like to come up and just say my piece. I think it's a huge loss if he's not the coach next year. Whoever their replacement is, I'm sure they're gonna be a wonderful person. I have a feeling this is already a done deal, and that's disappointing because you tell your kids about integrity, and sometimes when something's not right, you speak up for yourself, you speak up, and you ask questions. Hopefully you get the right answer, so that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
We want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Rich's record is not in question here, it shouldn't even be a consideration. I think what you heard from the girls, just here, past and returning players, there is a multitude of other players. We have letters for the board in support of Rich keeping his position before you make any final approvals or appointments, which we understand are on the docket tonight. I'm a 20-year high school varsity football and baseball coach, volunteer. I can tell you that in my 20 years of coaching young people, I have come across few people with Rich's integrity, character, knowledge of the game, and love and ability to teach. And I think that's something that's very important. I think that's something that should not be lost on this board or the recommendation of the future of a softball program, which, yes, is competitive, and yes, has a lot of wins, but that shouldn't be the consideration. And the way that things have been handled by the school administration has been less than satisfying to the parents. I was part of the meeting, I was supposed to be part of the meeting, that the girls went to speak with the principal, and I was asked to stay outside while he spoke to them. I was going there to support my daughter, who was the spokesperson for the five girls that were there, and I was asked to stay outside, which I find very insulting personally. I did have an opportunity to speak to Dr. Tbolzki afterwards alone and let him know that I was disappointed, that I went there to support my daughter and I was not allowed into a meeting. So we, as a group, are just urging the board to table any decisions that could be made tonight with regards to approving a new softball coach and investigating a little bit more before, if it's a fait accompli, I think it's a mistake, and I think you guys should consider very seriously the impact that Rich has had on the school for the past 10 years. And who can I give these to? For all of you, there's copies for everyone. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate all your feedback. Do we have any new business from the board members? Mrs. Haas.
Speaking of coaches, I would just like to acknowledge another former coach from our district, Mr. Fred Kuiper, who passed away this past week. Mr. Kuiper was very, very special to the Amsterdam community and I'm sure the entire district. He was 43 years in schools. He was an active coach at the high school. He was, made a member of the Hall of Fame, the Hillsborough High School Hall of Fame for athletics last year, and he retired last August, and we who knew him from Amsterdam knew that he was a very special guy who made every single child feel very special and very athletically capable, and taught everybody a lot of very, very good lessons about health as well as success. And I personally miss him terribly. I offer condolences to his lovely wife, who also teaches or taught for us, was an instructional assistant for us, but I'd just like to acknowledge his passing.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Let me share those sentiments. Mrs. Lay. Okay, Mrs. Hassan.
I just wanted to say that I know that all of the schools have had student council elections recently, and many of the students, so I hear, ran on platforms for ideas for the school, and I think it would be really lovely for you to invite them here to tell us their ideas and their thoughts. We don't hear enough from students, so I think it would be a really nice gesture to have them here.
That sounds great.
Thanks.
Mrs. Lay.
In light of what we just heard, and also because Dr. Schiff talked about the sports teams and how they're doing so well, this weekend I heard a video about the Olivet Middle School Football Team in Michigan. I don't know if anyone has heard this, but it's really worth your time, and it conveys the spirit of the best that you can get from a team, and I'd like to share that because I think that as a board, as board members, we want to cultivate a certain culture in our school district and, you know, make people understand the value of what was done. So basically, the team had a learning-disabled student, team member, and they wanted him to experience what a touchdown felt like for, you know, for the other team members who can do it more easily. So they got the ball as close to the, I think it was the one-yard line, and then they all huddled around him to get him to go to, make his touchdown. And what that did, it was so powerful because it not only affected him and his parents, who, I mean, his mother said that someday, somebody is always going to have his back from now until the day he graduates, but it was what happened to the other team members. It was the fact that they realized they needed to think, that thinking about other people brought back so much reward for them, and this is what, you know, I see with the students coming and talking about their coach, and obviously, when we see the teams doing well, this is what they're doing, and we want to take a moment and make sure that this culture is in Hillsborough, because we have a strong, we have a lot of special needs students, and I have, I have heard many of our students then go into, they go into majors where they are going to be teaching special needs because of their exposure in our town. So this is, this is really wonderful and should be, you know, highlighted.
Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Mr. Gillette.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. I wanted to mention a couple of things that I attended the past couple of weeks, highlighting two of our employees and the great work that they're doing in the district. One, as Dr. Schiff mentioned, the Red Ribbon Night, which was held here at Autton Road School. I was able to attend for some time that night, and I wanted to thank our Life Skills Coordinator, Mindamagia, for the great work that she does and continues to do. She's been in that position a few years now, and I think she keeps getting better at it because it was a tremendous night, I think the kids really loved it. I also had the opportunity to attend for a short time the first celebration of National Food Day?
Food Day.
National Food Day, which was also held at Autton Road School. That was last Thursday, a program run by Autton Road School Nurse, Mrs. Ruth Stanley, with help from ShopRite, and they did a tremendous presentation about healthy living and green food, and I know Mrs. Lay and Mrs. Centafonte were also able to attend that, and this is the first time they've had it in the district, and it was a good night with a pretty good turnout, too, of kids. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette.
If I may, I do want to mention that tomorrow will be the one-year anniversary of Superstorm Sandy. A year ago at this time, we were dealing with one of the most horrific natural disasters to hit our state, and the amount of work and coordination of local county and statewide officials was truly extraordinary. I do want to also emphasize that our administrative team was, worked tirelessly. Our teachers and support staff really came together at a very difficult time. Many of us can recall that we didn't have electricity, many of us didn't have running water during that period of time, and there were always people that were even worse off, and we reached out and pulled together as a community, as a region, and as a state. And as we, as we look forward, hopefully we won't have that type of, that type of weather problem as we, as we go into the winter. But I do want to, I did want to take this as an opportunity just to recall truly remarkable people doing remarkable things during an extraordinary time in our township's history. We really pulled together, and I just wanted to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Any other new business? Okay. Okay. Continuing on to committee reports. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Okay. Mr. Pulsifer with the HR Committee?
Yes, the Human Resources Committee met on October 17th, a week and a half ago. We started our meeting with a discussion of the database manager position at the high school. That's filled currently by Jane Williams, who is retiring after, I lost my notes here, I think 1985 or 95, did she start?
Started at 85.
85, okay. She's, she's been there a long time. She manages the schedules for students and a lot of other database activities around the high school. She is very dedicated, works very hard, and has been known to call in on vacation from far afield to make sure that everything is still operating correctly. She's been doing a great job for us, and she's retiring. And since there is no, she has no backup currently, there is no redundancy in that position. There's concern on the administration's part that when she leaves, there will be a rather large void to fill, and so the administration approached the HR Committee about the idea of when we can hire a replacement that we have overlap, which we don't normally do for that kind of, you know, position, to make sure that there is plenty of time for cross-training of the replacement, so that we can get, make sure that when, when Jane does leave, that we're in good hands. So, and the committee definitely supported that recommendation. It will, of course, be contingent upon hiring somebody to replace Jane and what, what the timing of that is as to how long the overlap would be, but the committee unanimously supported the idea of allowing for that overlap. To continue along that idea, we then discussed the possibility of creating a new position, a database secretary, to fill in part of that role and also provide some redundancy in that area so that we don't face the same situation in the future. At this time, the committee felt that while there was certainly reason to consider doing that, that we should postpone that until seeing how the training goes and how the replacement goes, and also view that more as an item potentially for next year's budget and not actually doing anything within this school year. But the discussion would go on from how the replacement moves on. We then had a quick update on the strong teacher evaluation process and how it's proceeding in the district. The, in the period from September 9th through November 8th, which we aren't quite there yet, they will have, the administrators will have completed 744 evaluations. This is quite a bit of evaluations and many more than would have been done in the past. There is some concern that this is leaving administrators less time in terms of time with teachers and time with students, so we're working on trying to find a way to kind of still make sure that they can be active within the schools during the day and get this work done. We followed up with more feedback on some of the, you know, we've, we've had discussions, and the teachers have certainly represented well their position about some of the stress in the system right now between the new evaluation system and some of the initiatives that we have taken on for ourselves. The administration has met and discussed with the leadership committee, and they're pushing out some deadlines or relaxing some of the earlier plans to try and lighten the stress on the teachers and administrative staffs in the district. The best teaching is done by teachers who aren't stressed, and so this is a way to hopefully alleviate some of the issues. So there's a number of things that are going on with common assessment tools and some of the new software systems that we've pushed out some deadline, the administration has pushed out some deadlines to relieve some of the stress in the system so that the teachers can continue to focus on education. We followed up with a discussion of the superintendent's goals and the recommendation that we consider a communications goal for the superintendent for next year. I believe this is being discussed in all the committees. The Human Resources Committee agreed that this was a good idea and that we should pursue it as part of the goals for the upcoming year. And the last description was approval of a job description for a confidential clerical assistant in the business office. This is not, does not require board approval, but the administration wanted to make sure that the committee was aware of this position. We don't have a job description at this time, and it's something we need to take care of from an administrative perspective, make sure we have job descriptions for our jobs. It can be handled by the administration, but they wanted to make sure that the Human Resources Committee was aware of what was going on and what the need was to have that job description. And finally, an update on, on Chapter 78 as it applies to benefits in the district. Employees are now required, let me back up a step. When the contract expired in June, some portions of Chapter 78 immediately went into effect, which covered the, the changes or the impact changes are towards contributions toward dental and vision premiums at the tier-one level, and this was something that was mandated by law. It was something that we were not aware of at that time, and Mr. Whitlock brought us up to speed on those changes also. And that was the end of our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Education Committee? Mrs. Ley?
We met on October 15th, I think it was the day after the last board meeting, and we talked about the one-to-one technology initiative. Specifically, Dr. Antunes explained to us what has been successful in ways to measure how this is working, and we learned that the parent groups are very helpful, and they'll continue to collect information from those parents, and that we would be implementing surveys for both parents and students, and potentially having a Community Technology Day. Things that we did discuss within the Education Committee were, we felt that we, you know, the students have to have their basic skills first, and then the technology would be enhancing the instruction, so that should be a priority in all classrooms. And also, it's very hard to measure, we had a pilot and to measure student achievement, and that was in the Algebra II classes. The data from last year was really not clear for us as board members, so we discussed what are some other ways to measure this. So, in subsequent Education Committee meetings, we are going to be looking at a literature review so that we could benchmark what other school districts and maybe possibly other states have done to measure student achievement with the use of technology. Another, well, we also wanted to compare classrooms that had devices, since we now have 20% of the students with the Chromebooks in the upper grade levels, and then we had some classrooms that are naive, they haven't been exposed to the use of Chromebooks in their classrooms. So we want to see if there's a difference in the achievement levels of the classrooms, of those classes. And during that discussion, we realized that, but moving to a one-to-one would require teacher collaboration, and the fact that there were a lot of stressors was a lot, a great concern for us, and we spent quite a bit of time discussing that. Then, at that point, Dr. Schiff had explained the delays that were discussed with the teachers, and Mr. Pulsifer has already brought those up, so I, I'm not going to repeat that. We also talked about the, one of the superintendent's goals, and the Education Committee, in the, I think in the past, we had this link to communications, at least Mrs. Haas and I did. So we, as a committee, thought that it was very important to include communication as one of the goals. And it's not just pushing out information, it's, it's also pulling in. So in other words, there are some, some things that we can do as a district to get input from the community, and then also, how are we responding to it? So I think that's an important aspect that we could focus on. There's always, in any organization, I think there's always room for better communication, and we would like to see that in our district. I think the, when I read the committee minutes from the other committees, that they were agreeable to this approach. Yeah. We also, there was, oh, Dr. Antunes had shared the, some information about a National History B and Bowl that our middle school reach students are doing. So that's just fun to hear about all the activities that our students can enjoy. And then Mr. Handler also spent quite a bit of time to tell us about the Google documenter, documentary, and how, how things were at the schools that participated. So, we saw some of the pictures, the snapshots, and he assured us that there was very good security in the schools, and he also wanted us to know how excited the students were, that they actually experienced what it's like to film, to have a real film setting and what, what their day was like. So, he, he did share with the committee that he felt there was little disruption, and it was because the committee had some concerns previously, as Mrs. Haas had pointed out, and, and we thank him for coming back to report to the Education Committee about that. And I think in a few months, there will be a YouTube of this visit to some of our schools, and it was interesting to note that we will be the only school district in the country to have highlighted what we're doing with the Nexus Seven tablets. So, I guess we have some budding movie stars in our town. And then, there are some upcoming items on our agenda, and I know, I noticed that Dr. Antunes had pointed out that there was a request for varsity, for us to review the varsity letter for Raiders, no, no, sorry, robotics team, and so that'll be coming up in future Education Committee meetings. And that's what I'd like to emphasize, that when we hear back from the, from our community that they can see the response from the district, so it's like, we're really working together as a true community. Is there anything else I missed? Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Ley. Mr. Gillette? The Operations Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Kins. The Operations Committee met on October 17th. We had many agenda items. I'm going to give you the highlights. I'm going to go in reverse order, actually. The committee reiterated to administration our desire to fully fund this year the capital reserve account up to the amount needed to pay for the, our contribution towards the ROD grants, as previously discussed. We also briefly discussed the superintendent's goals, as Mr. Pulsifer mentioned, that all committees were going to discuss that. We had a very preliminary discussion on developing a transportation policy, and right now, I think we rely mostly on common practice and past practices, practices in our transportation area, so we're looking to develop a, a policy for that. We discussed other uses of the district courier, but decided that other, other possible uses of the district courier were outside the scope of his current job description. We, we took a look at a couple of basically boilerplate policies. One just makes a, a whole bunch of new definitions in our bylaws about what a school is, what a board is, what a, I don't know, just a bunch of definitions, so that's self-explanatory, it was very easy. And we also took a look at another recommended policy, which we're going to approve, I guess, tonight for first reading, on this no smoking in school buildings policy. The changes in this have to do with electronic cigarettes, and those are also prohibited from schools in that policy. There were a few, I hate to characterize them as small, but there are a few invoices left from the Triangle Road School Playground Project that have been presented to the administration to see if we'd be able to pay these last invoices totaling approximately $1,200, and we recommend that we do pay these invoices and finish that project. The project is finished, but just to finish the whole thing off. And finally, what you all came here for tonight. As you know, we are entering an energy savings improvement plan, also known as ESIP. To go into that plan, we have chosen to award a contract to an energy services company. This is a contract that had to go out to bid, although the bid was a little bit different than we commonly see. It wasn't just based solely on cost or fee, it was based on a number of criteria, which I'm going to recount for you and the public. The criteria used in deciding who was awarded the contract was company overview and qualifications, approach to energy savings projects, ability to implement, project compatibility and energy savings projects, and, and the fee. So, each of the criteria was given a, was scored on a scoring system, and after all the scoring was done, we're recommending that the contract, as the energy services company, be awarded to Honeywell. Mr. Samjin is here today, our architect, and also I see that Mr. Kasha is here today. He's from Honeywell. We had an opportunity to speak with Mr. Samjin and Mr. Kasha at that meeting and ask them some questions. Mr. Kasha also presented his entire team to us that day, and they're going to shepherd us through this entire process, starting right from the beginning, the, I forgot what it's called, the something-level audit, the...
Investment.
Investment-level audit, that's an speaking investment-level audit. We also had our bond counsel, was also present, Lisa...
Gorab.
Lisa Gorab, thank you for all the hints from the, from the, from under the stage there. Thank you. Yeah, so, so they're here, so if any board members have any questions for Mr. Samjin when we go, I believe in a minute we'll probably go to questions from the discussion from the thing about, about committee reports. So they are both here in the front row, if you have any questions for them, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect segue. Do we have any questions or comments with regard to the committee reports? I do have one, just real quick, just a clarification. On the, on the ESCOs, you talked about the bidders, how many bidders submitted proposals?
Five. Yeah, five, five bidders total.
Okay, thanks. All right. Mrs. Ley?
Mr. Gillette said that was the highlight, and I, I think this is a really good board meeting, because we've had some good news from HR regarding the contract, but I have to say, I've been waiting for this one for three years. So personally, this is great news for me, and I did talk to Mr. Gillette about the coincidental feature at this, this is the New Jersey School Boards Association, like it's like a newsletter for school board members, and he said, "Go right ahead." Oh, thank you, she has the color. Let me show this to everybody. The, the cover, can you, can you zoom in on the cover? Thank you. This is very important. It says, "Where Environmental Awareness Takes Root." And I'm just thrilled how things are just lining up here. So basically, this issue, one of the articles is, is entitled, "A Breath of Fresh Air for Cash Strapped Schools." And, and when I came onto the board, I begged to be on the Operations Committee, because here's one of, these are the two key questions, and I'm really happy that Mr. Samjin and Mr. Kasha are here, so that you could hear how, how important it is to, I hope it's to our full board, but anyway. And so, the two key questions for the program is, number one, is the air quality and temperature conducive to an effective learning and teaching environment? And that is something that Dr. Schiff feels very strongly about. He, he brought that up when he was interviewing, I think, with us, and he came on board three years ago as well. These are the questions that we need to answer along... These are the questions that we need to answer along with doing our ESIP. And the second important question is, "Are we using energy in ways that support teaching and learning and not wasting it?" So, there... In one fell swoop, we can engage our students and teachers to collect data, use the school as a lab, and improve their environment. It's a win-win for everybody. This is... I don't know why I didn't think of this three years ago, but it takes... It just takes like the confluence of, um, school boards being interested in this and sustainable jersey. And our architect, I think he's on board, and I hope the board is as well. Because I don't want to bore everyone. This is just, there's five pages, so I'll just do a highlight. But in a key subcategory of this process, the topic is occupant education and collaboration. That means the students and the teachers who are in the buildings. And one is emphasize the importance of a timely response to teachers' concerns. So, if they can't feel comfortable and healthy in their work environment, just like us, everybody who goes to work, we need to feel comfortable where we work, then we are going to do our best at work. And then another one is integrate energy awareness training into classroom instruction. This was brought up as one of the strategic plans, part of the strategic plan, as just to... Not directly, but just to evaluate and think about it for future... For the future. And last, establish a system for teachers to report air quality or energy concerns for follow-up and evaluation. When you have a process, and I know Dr. Schiff is very interested in process, you know, it has to be structured. When we have something like this, then we'll be able to measure the improvements in air quality in the schools. And I know, this is the last thing I'll say about this. Before I even went onto the board, I visited, um, a middle school because it was being highlighted. It was like a solar tour. And the facilities director, he was so proud. He showed everyone who went on the tour about their geothermal installation. And, I mean, I know that's really expensive, but just putting it out there. And the fact that they use technology to bring in air, fresh air, which is required by law, the state, you know, you have a certain amount of fresh air that has to be circulated in schools. But they did it in such a way that was so efficient, it allowed for the cooling and heating of the building also, in a very efficient manner. I'm not an engineer, but, you know, it's something that we should really think about in our school district. And I know that Dr. Schiff cares a lot about how, you know, how comfortable our schools are. So, thank you, I apologize for...
Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Yes.
Just a question, a quick word. Mrs. Lay, I appreciate your passion about this. I also want to emphasize that tonight, we begin a process where we may be able to complete over $10 million of capital projects without increasing the tax base or having to pass a referendum. How would we pay for these projects? They're paid for by the savings that are generated from it. And this type of smart, um, smart capital improvement projects enables us to do all of those things that you just talked about without having to increase taxes on our local property taxpayers. And that's what I think is even more of the win-win as we move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions with regard to the committee reports? Okay, I'm gonna... I'll put... I don't like to put board members on the spot, but I will anyways. Last week was the New Jersey School Boards Convention. So, for those who attended, I don't know if there's anything that you want to report back to the other board members? Mrs. Haas?
You really didn't want to ask that question. Actually, you know, these are the materials that I brought back from convention. And I actually went to quite a few classes that were very valuable, and I'll be sharing as soon as I get my scanner hooked up to my computer. I'll be very happy to share all these materials with the board. I attended a class on the evaluation process and the role of the school board. I attended a class on current issues in school law, which I attend every single year and is the best class because it gives you all the updates about everything that's happened. And I do have a 26-page handout on that, which is like one paragraph on every case, very, very easy to read, and categorized by subject area. So, you could just go to the areas that you're very interested in, but it's really worth reading. I went to a class on the law and gifted and talented education. Apparently, gifted and talented education is in for some changes statewide this year. So, we do need to pay attention to that. And that was directed by the head of Legal Policy and Labor Relations for NJSBA, as well as Roberta Braverman, who's from the Association for Gifted Children for New Jersey. Very, very interesting workshop. The next day, I attended a class on forging an effective governance team. And that was led by the head of the executive director, Dr. Larry Fonsad of the New Jersey School Board Association. And it's all about moving from good to great. So, I'll be sharing that as well. It was a very interesting panel discussion. And following that, we attended a meeting called Board Meetings Gone Wild, Keeping Cool When the Temperature Rises at Your Board Meeting. And it was awesome because they were showing video clips from boards all over the country, which were funny as you wouldn't believe, of, you know, situations and how people handled them, but also worth doing. And the following day, I covered classes in collective bargaining and student achievement. There was also a class on school innovation, talking about promising new practices, which I will be bringing up at the next Education Committee meeting because there were some very, very good ideas there. And there was a very good class on food allergies, which was my final class. And I got a bunch of materials on that. And actually, the person who led that was from the Department of Health, and she had actually heard of Hillsborough. She was well aware of us. So, it was a very interesting class as well. And those regulations will be changing shortly. So, that's my report.
Thanks. Real quick, on the, um... Any insights that they... Were they able to provide any insights on changes for gifted and talented?
I'm sorry.
Were there any insights? Were they able to provide any insights with regard to changes for gifted and talented?
In terms of gifted and talented, they were talking about... There are changes on the federal, state, and, um... Federal and state level.
I guess we'll...
People were talking about.
I guess we'll just find out as they progress.
There was some new case law as well. And they were basically saying, you know, you've got to have policies and procedures that are very clear and consistent with DOE policy on identification. There's got to be a rational basis correctly applied. They were talking also about enrollment in college classes, utilizing option two as much as possible to meet graduation requirements. Public education alternatives, they were talking about, choice and academies. And they were mostly talking about equality in school and classroom practices.
Okay.
And, you know, they said the most important thing for the board is to continuously improve curriculum instruction, which I believe we do, and to provide the time and resources necessary to develop supportive curricula and instructional tools. So...
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. And with regard to Board Meetings Gone Wild, what happens on YouTube stays on YouTube, so...
Oh, my God. I mean, you could go to YouTube. In fact, they gave us the name of a city that we should hopefully go to, which apparently weekly has wonderful...
Any other report outs or new business? Or for the committee reports? Okay, thanks. Now, I'd like to open up to the floor for comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Okay, seeing none, I'd like to hand it over to the action agenda with Dr. Schiff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve professional travel-related expenses, the HIB investigation list, approve the curriculum as listed, overnight field trips, revised policies for first reading, including acceptable use for using the computer network, a HIB policy and pupil smoking, and approve the two field trip destinations as listed.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A6 of the action agenda.
On behalf of the Education Committee, I ask the full board to approve items A1 through A6.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Eckert.
Mrs. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley? Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsover?
Yes.
Mrs. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes. Motion passes. Continuing on, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I am recommending to approve. The retirements as listed. Dina has worked with us since 2002, an instructional assistant at Woods Road. And Jane Williams has been our database manager since 1985, as well as discussed through the HR Committee. And we wish both of them only the very best. To approve the revised leaves of absence, long-term substitutes, the revised mentor list, transportation aids, co-curricular stipends, contract changes, mentor contracts, leaves of absences as listed, and appointments of coaches, co-curricular advisors, mentors and buddies, substitutes, lunch aid, extra period coverage during parent-teacher conferences, lunch aids, new school year meeting, approve student teachers as listed, and summer work.
All right. I'm gonna exert some presidential privilege as well. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B14, while excluding item B10 dot 1 dot 2. I'd like to send B1 dot... B10 dot 1 dot 2 to the Human Resources Committee so that we can learn more about that for the next meeting.
Thank you. Can I just...
Yes, Mrs. Swasan. We have a motion on the floor for items 1 through 14 excluding...
Well, I was just going... I wanted to change the motion.
Okay.
Because 10.1.3 deals with a person who would be replacing 10.1.2. So, I don't know if we wanted to take that up now or refer both, you know, table both. They're linked together.
Okay, okay, yes, all right. Thank you for that amendment. All right. So, I'm still waiting to get a... Okay, so just to repeat, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items B1 through B14 and excluding items B10 dot 1 dot 2 and B10 dot 1 dot 3.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I recommend the board approve the items as listed by our esteemed president in whatever order he had.
I know I have a second. Thank you, Dina. Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Mrs. Lay?
I really appreciate that, Mr. Kins, because we were faced with something similar before, and I thought it was completely unfair that the board members had to vote without appropriate information. So, I really appreciate that.
Mr. Pulsover?
Just one question. Looking at the nature of one of the positions, how soon can we process this? Because one of the coaches is part of the wrestling program for this school year, which I would assume probably starts pretty soon. Dr. Schiff, do you know if that's true? That the wrestling program will be getting started soon?
November 15.
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll... This will come back up for the next meeting, which is the 11th.
Okay, so we may have to have a special meeting because I don't think HR Committee would be meeting before then. So, we may need to do something with that. All right, the HR Committee will work administration to have a meeting before then.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Eckert.
Mrs. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsover?
Yes.
Mrs. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes. Motion passes. Continuing on with the action agenda, Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve the monthly financial reports, bills list, line item transfers, and to approve the selection of an energy service company for the implementation of an ESIP, Energy Savings Improvement Project. To approve the transportation jointure agreement with Montgomery. It's listed to approve the first reading of bylaw dot 02 for first reading. Approve the revised policy for smoking in school buildings and on school grounds. To approve the updated out-of-district placements for this school year. Accept the donation of the following musical instruments from DonorsChoice.com. And we appreciate their donation. And to approve the settlement agreement and release. And release. Yes, I'm sorry. And we have two addendum. Actually, it's in two different, um... Two different themes here. The first one, an addendum to approve Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal rates for the month of January 2014. The next motion, C12, is to terminate Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield and prescription plan as of January 31st. And then C13, motion to designate the new healthcare and prescription drug provider as the New Jersey School Employees Health Benefit Plan, beginning on February 1st. The other motion is C14, and this is a motion to approve Food Services Agreement Addendum for the 2013-2014 school year. So, just a summary, we have addendum items C11 through C14. C11, 12, and 13 are moving our district from the Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield private to the State Health Benefits Plan, beginning February 1st. And the... An addendum, C14, is to approve the Food Services Agreement Addendum for this current year.
And those addendum or addenda were provided with the agenda at the beginning of the meeting. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C14 of the action agenda.
On behalf of the Operations Committee, I move that we approve C1 through C14.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
I forgot when you talked about it in the committee report, Greg, and I almost forgot to ask again now. The policy regarding smoking, you mentioned that the change was tied to electronic cigarettes. Is that because... Is the reason to have that included in the policy in terms of not condoning smoking in general? Because, I mean, my understanding of electronic cigarettes is there's no negative impact to those around them or anything where we normally consider that?
I don't think that... I don't know if they gave an explanation for the reasoning. Was it a...
Could be a nicotine delivery mechanism.
Is it?
Well, it is. It is the nicotine... But I just, um... I think that... Well, the reason it's put in is because they just want to make sure every... All the bases are covered, that electronics, cigarettes count too. The reasoning behind that, I'm not completely sure about. But this is part of state regulation. That we add this to our... It's part of state regulation that we added.
Okay.
It does... It does, you know, if we had our expert here tonight, she's not here tonight, she could tell us about it, but...
No, I'm just wondering because...
It is. I mean, it is a nicotine delivery device.
Right, but it's... But my understanding is it's just to you. There's no secondhand smoke, there's none of that side effect. So, it's not illegal to smoke outside because you're doing it to yourself and not to somebody else when you're a distance from the building. But if these, in fact, don't spread... But if these, in fact, don't spread anything, I was just concerned about, you know, exactly where the policy lies on that.
That's it.
I understand that smoking is still not good for you, but until the state makes it illegal to smoke totally, there's a, there could be people who wanted to split the line saying, "I'm not impacting anyone else with these," whereas if I smoke a cigarette, I'm impacting the people around me. Whereas my understanding of these smokeless electronic cigarettes is I'm not impacting those people around me. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
I think that's, I think you have sound reason, you should have, I don't know. Whoever decides these things had...
This is being handed down from the state to Stroud...
State reg, it's state reg.
I don't know if we, I kind of remembered the committee meeting, I didn't take notes on this part, that, Judy's joking because I don't take notes at all, that someone commented that other substances could also be delivered through these electronic things, or something like that, or whoever, and we just...
Other substances could be delivered through my water bottle.
I got you there.
Not that there's anything in my water bottle, just for the record.
Hand it over.
Okay. Any other, any other discussions for the current motion? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Eckert.
Mrs. Bogacheski?
Yes.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsiver?
Yes.
Mrs. Swasan?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to old business, any old business from board members? Okay, I do want to have on, I actually missed it when we were going through the action agenda for item A, but one of the other policies was on the HIV harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and in there, they talked about events that happen off school grounds. So again, the state is requiring that the schools, that school district be responsible for any actions of harassment, intimidation, or bullying that occurs off school grounds. And the way that it's written is whether it disrupts or interferes with the orderly operation of the school, or the rights of other students. And rights of other students is pretty broad, and so I foresee that that's going to, it's gonna, it can get pretty interesting for the school districts, if we're now responsible for protecting the rights of students outside of the school properties, school grounds, and school time. So, yet another thing that's handed down from the state. That's my commentary on that. Any, any other old business from board members? Okay. So now I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.